Gentlemen and welcome to the Crestwood School District Board of Education's study session for Monday, May twenty-fourth of two thousand and twenty-one. I call this meeting the order at five thirty-five. And I would ask that Madam President take role.
Ms. Berry?
Here.
Ms. Elzayat?
Here.
Mrs. Fawaz is absent. Mr. Garcia?
Here.
Myself, Ms. Kaminsky?
Here.
Mr. Seba?
Here.
Mr. Cherry of Aquorum?
All right, thank you. And because we are doing this as a working study session with supper, excuse me if I'm, I eat. But anyways. All right, so we have some items on the agenda, our business updates, our human resources updates, as well as some updates from our superintendent. So with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to our administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I only have a couple of quick updates before we move into study session items. First and foremost, I'll be reiterating this at the board meeting. With the new order by the CDC and the State of Michigan and Wayne County Health, that all restrictions for outdoor activities have been lifted other than face masks if you are not vaccinated. Therefore, I want to say that I'm very happy that we were proactive and we had scheduled graduation already. Everything's been ordered, everything's ready to go for June fifth at ten a.m. The only difference now is we will not be requiring only two visitors per family member. So it will be open, it will be unlimited.
Oh, you've removed the two tickets.
Yes, so families are still gonna, students are still gonna get two tickets. Cause what we did this year is we wanted to make the tickets where they're commemorative, something that is a keepsake, so you're still gonna get those tickets. We're still gonna have the bleachers, nothing's gonna change, everything's gonna stay the same.
You're still having two?
No, we're only having one. Ten a.m. to, the goal is ten a.m. to twelve p.m. We'll be checking the weather forecast constantly, God forbid, please don't let it happen. But if there is gonna be inclement weather, the reason why we did it for ten a.m. Is that worst-case scenario, if we have to push it back, we can push it back.
So that is a reminder to the board that you would like us in the audit, I'm sorry, in the library?
The school office.
So the school office at nine thirty?
Nine fifteen.
Nine fifteen.
We'll have some, we'll have water, coffee, and some snacks for the, for the board and other participants. And, cause we, was we'd like to be able to walk out with this, prior to the students coming out for commencement.
So, I know you're lifting like the, you know, the amount of guests and stuff, but with the bleachers, what can we, how many can we hold? I know now we're no longer requiring distancing and...
How many can we hold? Probably a thousand.
Okay, so there's not, there's really no issue in regards to...
There shouldn't be, and the way we're gonna have it set up is there will be, I'm sure people, there will be areas where people could stand if they choose to. By us moving the venue on the, where the scoreboard is and that thirty-yard line area, facing the school, no matter where you sit or stand, you'll be able to see all of the students. So no one will be behind the students, you'll be able to see them all. You may be sitting a little bit behind them, but you can still see them. It's not gonna be as if where you sit determines whether or not you can see your child. So we'll, we'll be in good shape when it comes to that.
Maybe we'll get like sixty-five degree weather?
I just don't want rain, that's all I care.
I know.
Yes, Nadia.
So we are gonna sell, rent those bleachers?
Yes, we, we need them no matter what.
Yeah.
We've never had a problem with the, when we had it, um, did we? I've never, when my daughter graduated.
The issue that's always come up is that the very, very front, where the bleachers come, you know, where you have to walk up, people would stand there because there was, there was, there was not enough seating at that time. So those that were sitting here would have to stand up to look over.
So everybody was standing?
So, so as slowly you'd have, you know, a few rows.
They had the officers cleaning it up.
They did, one year they did, I don't, but, but we had switched and went to the car, the hockey hall or hockey.
Arena.
It changed.
If you don't mind.
First year.
First year, yeah.
I'll just say this, because I'm sure there's still gonna be people who are cautious or concerned and maybe aren't vaccinated, that it's probably still better to space them out, yeah.
It will.
I don't think they will though.
And the other, yeah, and the other thing too is, what do we have, three hundred and, what's our graduating number? Do you remember off the top of your head? I, I forgot.
It was over three fifty, it was over three fifty.
So let's say you have two people per student comp, that's already seven hundred.
Yeah.
And you know it's gonna be a lot more.
There are gonna be more than that.
So, and it's gonna be a safer, now, when we renovate our facilities in the future, we'll have everything situated, we won't have to rent anything. So, but I think this is a good move with the community too, to show, look, we're investing in an environment that is beneficial for their families, so that when we do wanna go for renovation, we can say, this is what we have, and this is what we'd like to have, and I think it'll be very helpful.
You had mentioned the CDC guidelines and the State of Michigan guidelines on people that are and/or are not vaccinated. How would you be able to dictate that? I mean, has anybody given any guidance on that yet?
No.
Cause you can't ask somebody to see their vaccination card, so.
Okay, so some place, so you can, you can make that your policy.
Well, I gotta be honest with you, I don't even know if you wanna do anything like that. That's almost an infringement on people's rights.
And the only way for you to verify is if you have access to the MICR system, which is the State of Michigan system that immunizations get uploaded to. So really, unless somebody's walking around with MICR on their phone, there's no way that they can verify that somebody's been vaccinated or not.
So is, is it an idea to possibly put an area for people that don't wanna wear masks to sit and...
Then you're infringing again because you're identifying what...
But I'm not asking anybody whether or not, from a, from a HIPAA perspective, if they took a vaccine or not. I'm not trying to open up a can of worms, but you're talking about a thousand people and potentially some parents are gonna be uncomfortable and others are fine with it, and to each his own, but...
So on June fifth, people will not have to wear a mask outside?
Right.
I, I'm sorry, because...
July first.
July first.
July first.
No, July fourth is...
So June first, starting June first, nobody will have to wear a mask outside anymore. So the thing is, how do you, then what do you do? It's, it's becoming even, uh...
Again, no, I understand, I just...
But I, I like your idea.
A mask-only section, is that the thing?
A, a non-vax section.
I'm not gonna lie to you.
No, I, I, yeah.
But like a ma, like mask-only session, I mean...
No, I don't think you should ask if they're vaccinated or not. If you wanna wear a mask and you wanna sit with other people that are masked, this is the area for you. I'm not asking if you're vaccinated or not.
Would we agree?
How do you determine how large the space is?
And how, and how do we, how do we, how does administration dictate? I don't think we as a board...
Let's get past that because we're not getting anywhere with that next.
Well, it's just so we don't, the board doesn't, shouldn't engage in that, that's administration. You know, if that's something that they see that they'd like to do, they, they can. But if the CDC is dictating one thing and we're following it, you know, we just want...
It wasn't my intention to dictate, it was a question.
And I, and I understand where you're coming from. Yeah, I understand.
Same, I just don't know, how do you deter, how do you determine how large of a space you make them if you don't make it large? I mean, I get it.
And that, yeah, that's part of the issue too, is like how large of the space? And what if we run out of space there and then we're gonna move people around? I mean, it's good, it's good to bounce that idea around, and we'll, we'll continue bouncing it around. Right off the top of my head, I can't think of a solution, maybe I can twenty-four hours from now, but it's, it's a good thing to bounce around.
I didn't know if there was guidance from the CDC originally, okay, that's...
Somebody asked me that same question last week and it says, it's like golf, it's an honor system.
I believe that a year and a half into the pandemic, people pretty much are comfortable with, if they, if they're going out now, they're comfortable, if they're wearing their mask, because I think there's a lot of people that are still gonna wear their mask even though they don't have to.
Yeah, I, I believe that, I, I do believe that. So, and then for honors night, which is this Thursday, and it should be on your calendar, that is still two participants per honor student, cause it's indoor to meet capacity.
Thank you for that calendar because I kept going.
Honors is at six p.m.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Should be in your calendar.
Kristen emailed us a calendar as well.
And I, and what I also do is Kristen and I are also putting that information on my Friday updates as well, so.
Yeah.
What's the most, if you could share it through Google, then we can just add it to...
I...
I know it was in here, I read it.
That's how I get my...
I will, yeah, we can add it to the Google Calendar as well.
Thank you.
No problem. So we're still maintaining the two, two-person per student for honors night. But, and also, like I've said to everyone, we're not changing anything else when it comes to commencements. So, it's gonna be, I think it's, you know, as long as the weather cooperates, it's gonna be a nice event. And I'm looking forward to my actual first graduation as superintendent, so.
That's right, how it's playing is that.
Yes, I am very excited, yeah.
Can you tell me, do you know, did we confirm, are we doing food trucks, are we having?
Uh, so Kristen and Ron are working on that, so they reached out to four, four or five local food truck companies and ones that you probably have seen all over.
Okay.
And gave them information, so she's working on that, what it is. And we've either said we'd like to get twenty-five percent of your profit as a donation, or an upfront donation of, I forget the amount.
Okay, can, will we just get an update as to who's attending, when we get confirmation on who's attending?
Yes, yes.
Cause I was, okay, there was...
Yeah, and if you have, if you have any vendors you'd like us to reach out to, please let Kristen know. But we're reaching out to all the local vendors. And we're trying to mix it up where it's food, dessert, coffee, and something else.
Immediately after?
It'll be, they'll, they'll be there at nine a.m.
Oh, okay.
And after, so people walking in, they wanna grab something, grab something and they can go inside, or if afterwards they wanna come out. That was actually Joel's idea, it was a great idea, I was like, yeah.
So it's not from eleven to one, cause he initially told me eleven to one?
Well, I changed it from nine until the end, because for people coming early, they wanna grab something and go in and sit, hey, make an event out of it.
Some of the kids...
They're helping with paying for the, whatever we need.
Yeah, the donate, every donation helps, tell you.
Some of the kids were just asking who we were gonna be having, cause they were looking at doing something in the evening in their own, like after commencements at home, one of their homes, and they're looking to invite, they just didn't wanna do the same.
Got you.
They don't have the same...
Well, we should know within the next couple of days. Kristen's gonna, is finalizing something, she's reaching out and getting some more information.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, that is my biggest update for the study session, is graduation and move forward.
Did you wanna mention the meeting yesterday?
Oh, I am so sorry.
No, I just...
You are so right. It's been going on for so long that, it's just been... So yesterday, President Garcia and Secretary Janun joined me at Cherry Hill Baptist Church, where I, where we sat and I was able to give a quick narrative and preface of what we've been working on this entire time, and what our goals are, and talking about our vision as a district, and our goal to be a P fourteen district, which means, you know, working with students from age three to age twenty-one, and so on and so forth. And we were very well, we only had one, maybe two questions that were very, like, you know, legitimate. The one question that was extremely legitimate was, you know, in the future, you know, what if the Crestwood School District decides they don't want this property anymore? You know, how can you guarantee us that it's still gonna remain a school and so on and so forth? And my response was, well, first and foremost, we're gonna be investing millions of dollars into this property. And we're not in the business to make money. Our goal is to establish, you know, a presence for our community. I said, and moreover, as a school district, our word is our Bible, you know, so many words. Because we, you know, work with our taxpayers, and the homeowners around us are our taxpayers. And we're never gonna go against our word, because we are nothing without our, you know, community. And additionally, I explained to them, you know, our, our purpose and our process. And basically, later, I had told one of the church members, I asked the church member, I said, do you know how much it costs to build a new elementary school? And she says, oh, ten million? I said, hmm, go up a little bit. And I told her, sixty million with all the bells and whistles, forty-five million just for basic. I go, even if somebody came in and was gonna offer us ten million dollars for this property, which we wouldn't want, we would still have to go get another fifty, sixty million. So it's not financially, it's not cost-effective for us to use taxpayers' dollars to, to take this, put millions into it and to sell it. So, lease agreement is being signed. We will have that in our hands very shortly, we may have gotten it already, I'm not sure. It's been a busy day today, so I apologize. Once that lease agreement is in our hands, we will be scheduling our first meeting with the architects. The church is gonna invite neighbors from the neighborhood to come in. We're gonna invite members from the school community, as well as board members that are on the committee. And I'm gonna be inviting a couple of city council members, so they can sit at the table and they can see what we're doing in the city of Dearborn Heights to support the city's growth. And through that process, we're going to, our goal, our, and, 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 everyone knows this about me, is I, I create these goals that are difficult, but I do that on purpose. You know, our goal is to have that building up and functioning, running by January, February of two thousand and twenty-two. That's our goal. If we can do that by then, that's beautiful. The only thing that's gonna hold us back is the fact that during this pandemic, it's hard to find labors, it's hard to find materials, if anything's gonna hold us back, it's going to be that. But we're excited, and it's going to be really, with that and the other projects in place, I guarantee you, in two years, no one will recognize us. We will look like a completely new district moving in the right direction. And I appreciate the board's support on this, because these projects are not easy, nor are they safe. You know, because what's safe is, let's just fix what we have. But I appreciate the board's support and the community's support, knowing that these projects are really gonna take us to the next level. So I'm excited, I am very excited.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I mean, that's wonderful news to hear, and I, I have to say, our buildings have come a long way, you know, with, under your leadership. I mean, from where we were to where we are, I, I think I was afraid to walk into the building. I mean, seriously, so I have to say that we have come a long way with the way that things are moving in this district.
Thank you.
They look beautiful.
Well, we have a great team, I mean, we really do, between Scott and Penny, the custodians and maintenance. Our custodial and maintenance teams, I will tell you, they take pride in the work they do. When I go to buildings and they'll say, Yusuf, I, you know, we really need to do this and that, can we purchase this? I'm like, yeah. Penny gets an email or texts, boom, POs in, they get what they need. And it's the same thing we're doing with teachers. When it's what's in the best interest for our students and our community, we're not going to belabor on the why. You give us a good explanation, that's your expertise. I forget the head custodian's name over at Highview.
Oh, that's, uh...
Jafal Sammy.
Sammy.
He really takes a lot of fun.
So Sammy, I went there one day, and I was going in, quick and out, I had to do something, and I had another meeting, and Sammy's like, hey, can I show you something? And I'm like, yeah, sure. He goes, you're in a rush? I go, sort of, I got a few minutes. And he was walking, he created his own little irrigation system, so that he can keep everything water, because him and his team spent a lot of time planting the flowers and cutting the grass, and, and that's, that's, that's the ownership that makes a district proud of who they are. In our curb appeal, I'll tell you, my philosophy is, if there's one piece of graffiti at nine a.m., that piece of graffiti better be off at nine fifteen a.m. And I don't care if we have to paint over it fifteen times, because that is how important the perception must be. And when students walk into a building that is well-maintained and clean...
They take pride.
They feel better about themselves, absolutely.
Correct, so I appreciate you mentioning that, Trustee Jerry, Barry.
Yes, Sue.
Any traction on Berwyn?
Uh, yes, so we, so right now it's in our hands.
Okay.
So right now it's in our hands. Uh, we met with the architects, I had another meeting with the architects, we went through the expectations, what we're looking for. So now they're in the process, their team is together, they're gonna need a few weeks to give us the drawings, so on and so forth. Uh, and what, so there's gonna be a back and forth between our team and the architects, probably two, three times before we bring it back to the city. So it's in process, it is in our hands right now, but I have been in constant communication with the city and talking about possibility of next steps. So I'm looking forward to our next meeting with the city officials, but that may take some time because of the work that the architecture team has to put together.
Go ahead, Nadia.
Is C-Mont still available, or is that off the table? Like as an extra?
I, I heard it was sold.
Was it?
I heard there was a bid put in, but there was some problems with the dapping, so I don't know the latest.
Okay.
Um, what's, what would be the timeframe in regards to Berwyn, twenty-four?
So our goal, Berwyn, the timeframe for Berwyn right now is twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-one, September. That's where I'm currently at. Now, it's a very advantageous goal, but again...
Man, that's the...
As, as, I, yeah, right? As we continue to work with the architects, and we continue to work with the engineering firm through the architects, they'll give us a better timeline, because if we can get it done, we will. If we can't, we'll adjust. And we are currently looking at the logistics and the space that is available in our elementary schools in order to meet our needs of the overpopulation, and we have some contingency plans on the table. But we're still, I don't wanna bring those contingency plans out just yet until the architects and the engineering team gives us their professional opinion on what they think the turnaround time can be. And I think no matter what, it's gonna be advantageous to us as well as the city.
Sue?
So I'm just concerned, I think September two thousand and twenty-one is, um, really nice that you're that optimistic. And I, I'm concerned about obvious space, and I understand Kenlock's already full for kindergarten, we're already moving kids to Highview.
Correct.
Um, I got two phone calls on that, and calmed one of the moms down, the other one, I'm not sure. But people are concerned, so I just am afraid of what we're gonna do, because we don't have the room. And districts are going back full-time pretty much, and I know we've talked about continuing virtual, but I think we're gonna get some resistance from our parents.
Yeah, we, we currently, our focus is gonna be one hundred percent face-to-face.
Okay.
We, we don't have, we have no intention to go virtual. We are looking at, you know, a virtual, not a virtual high school, but a virtual component of our high school for struggling students, as a, as a alternative means to education, um, to support students who have struggles that are out of their control. The one thing that we have, which we're blessed with, is we have space in terms of land. Each of our elementary schools has land. Um, no matter what we decide to do with Berwyn, our enrollment is going to force us to even extend all of our elementary schools by a minimum of two to three classrooms. And, but we feel that currently with our, with the fact that we have a budget meeting June fourteenth, you got some more good news coming to you, I just prefaced by saying that. But we're fairly confident that with the amount of funds we have in our equity fund, we will be over twenty-one percent, and between that and our ESSER funding, we may be able to do what needs to be done in the short term to support our long-term goals.
Which is like mobile home type things?
It would be actual, we would actually, no, no, no.
No, she's right, they bring those mobile...
Yeah, but we're not allowed to do, we're not allowed to do that anymore, Nadia.
No.
No, we're actually looking at right now, and I have, I have a team looking into it to actually add two to three classrooms.
That's awesome.
And to our elementary schools. That will help alleviate the current needs, prepare us for our long-term solutions, because in our elementary schools, we are adding art, music...
Thank goodness.
To all of our elementary schools beyond what we currently have. So therefore, our art and music teachers will also have a space to teach and won't have to be on a cart once we complete our entire infrastructure vision. And as you also know, none of our schools have storage. So therefore, what we do with our elementary schools is not only, again, for short-term solution, but it will be for a long-term solution. We are currently, you know, I think we're up since January of two thousand and twenty, about five, six hundred students, right around, or four hundred students, was the number? Do you remember off the top of your head, Penny?
No, but I wanna say it was closer to three, three...
Three, three hundred or something. But I will tell you, we will be up to about five hundred by next year. So that space is going to be needed. So, right now, once the architects and the engineers come back with what they think is a safe timeline, I will be bringing to the board that timeline, plus our contingency planning, and with hopefully a cost analysis on that entire process.
Mr. Chair? Do you think two to three classrooms will be enough?
Four, yes, it will be. And, and the reason why I say that is, if, so here's how to look at it. The two to three classrooms will work for us while we're finalizing our work with Berwyn. Once our work with Berwyn is finalized, and if it goes to fruition...
And that's what I'm talking, like, that's where, there's where my concern is, so if it doesn't...
If it doesn't, then we'd have to look at adding more classrooms.
Okay, that's, okay.
Yes, but we don't have to do it all at once. We can phase it, because I will be honest, if we're gonna do something like that all at once, we gotta go for another bond.
Yeah.
And I don't believe the community is ready for something like that.
Yeah.
So right now, we are going to, that's why we're pinching every penny, so that we can stretch every dollar as far as we can, so that we can use our equity funding, which is, that's what it's for, to expand and do what we need to do. The next thing you have to keep in mind is with three, three hundred and fifty more students, we didn't increase staffing like we usually would increase staffing, cause we have nowhere to put the staff. Therefore, class size is a little high right now. Therefore, that's one to two years of saving in salaries that we're gonna be able to use for infrastructure, which will help us then when we hire staff, it'll balance itself out. The other thing too is, when we get funded for our students, it's like retroactive sometimes. So you may get funding for students that you got last year, next year. So it allows us to have that cost analysis to prepare the board, and like we did in our last budget meeting, and we will be doing, I know I'm speaking for Penny, I'm sorry Penny, but like we will be doing in our next budget meeting, we will be giving you a conservative estimate, which is gonna be, actually is a little bit of a pessimistic estimate, so that hopefully we get more funds, that money is available to go into our equity funding and therefore support our infrastructure growth, without asking the taxpayers for any dollars for that.
Are we gonna at least hire more parapros to take care of these increased class sizes?
Um, to be honest with you, my direct answer to that would be no. I would rather hire teachers that would team teach and then gain their own classroom once we have the infrastructure where it needs to be. Um, because our philosophy right now is, paraprofessionals are being used for special education students, students with IEPs. I would rather hire a new teacher instead of two parapros to team teach and/or support pushing instruction. Uh, the research shows that having two certified teachers in a classroom or supporting one another shows three times the growth in student achievement than it does bringing in a paraprofessional.
Danielle?
So, thank you, I just, two questions. So if you don't have Berwyn ready to go in September, you're going to add classrooms?
We're, we're, we're hoping, the idea is that if we don't have it ready, our goal is to add classrooms before this summer goes out.
Add classrooms?
Yes.
Okay, they'll be ready to go by?
Well, that's where, we're, we have, we're gonna, we're gonna have to do something. And that's, 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 that currently, that's our contingency plan, because we, our goal, Berwyn is our ultimate goal to work with the city to create that partnership. But in that meantime, we have to... Yeah, we have to support our current population.
My second, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The other thing too, and I, one more thing too to keep in mind, and once the Cherry Hill property is complete, all of the young fives, all of the non-kindergarten classes will be moved to Cherry Hill as well. So that's gonna open up a couple more classrooms as well.
My second question is, have, has anybody looked at the numbers of, did we get any students from private schools whose parents thought, well, I'm gonna go put them in public this year because it's virtual anyway? Why would I go pay for private school tuition? And I ask that only cause I know a few families that did.
Yeah. I know we did receive students from private schools, and I'm not sure if we tracked that, do we track from private?
We don't, we don't, we don't track from, if they're in our district, we don't track them.
I'm just wondering, I'm wondering, are we looking at, you know...
Students leaving?
Yeah, because if everything is open in September, I'm wondering if people are just gonna go back to private or...
Well, I'm hoping that they found love with us and they don't wanna leave, but that, that's, that's a predictor that we, we don't, we...
It won't affect your classroom?
No, it's not that, no.
Logistics anyway, right?
And I'll tell you, I, I do know this, yes, we did get some students from private schools, but we also received several students that moved into the Dearborn Heights Crestwood area.
Yeah.
Because when they give us their address and change, a lot of, I can hear them a lot of times, cause you know, Kristen and them will be talking to them, and I can hear what school district they're coming from. Yes, you know, and...
I do know one family that came from a private school that's so happy that they're not leaving.
Good.
But, um, you know, I, I, I love to hear that, I hope there's more.
Me too, but that's, that's a good question, but we really don't have a way to estimate that.
I'll agree with you on the, the, there's more kids moving into the district from other districts now. I mean, obviously, there's not many homes... There's more kids moving into the districts from other districts now, um, I mean, obviously, there's not many homes for, for sale right now. But the ones that are, are being bought by parents with, with children, but uh, just timeline. So we're talking about Berwyn and we're talking about possibly adding on the buildings, but we're like towards the end of May. We got June, July, and August, what is the timeline for Berwyn to say? Either yay, we're gonna do this and try and get it done by September, or we gotta find contractors to add on to these buildings cuz. That's a very tight window.
It is, mid-June, we're hoping to have everything back that we need by mid-June.
And you think we can get Berwyn done in two months or add on three classrooms to all these buildings?
I believe we can, if we don't get Berwyn done by September, I believe that we'll be able to add on at least one to two classrooms per building. Um, and then if we need to add while the school is in session, we can continue to do so.
So if we're gonna add anyway, which is what it sounds like, should we not be looking into that now and and?
So currently Scott Jacobs has been tasked to work with our current architectural firm, and he's getting those numbers. So I'm hoping to have that to the board very soon.
Okay, thank you.
Yusuf, uh, I'm sorry, Dr. Musalim, so I have a question. I'm hoping that Berwyn is going to be a building that we take down considerably on the inside because of the asbestos and so on. Um, and I mean, all the way through, I mean, from the ceiling down all the way to the asbestos towels on the floor. You think that's possible in two months? I mean, are they gonna be working around the clock, uh, twenty, you know?
So, eh eh, are we gonna abate the entire building? Yes, but currently, currently, it is well sealed. So one thing that everyone has understood about asbestos, asbestos is only dangerous if, if it's broken or cracked. It's very well sealed, and even the architectural team said it's very well sealed.
Oh, I know.
So what will happen, so what? So what will happen is, if we're able to get into Berwyn, it's gonna be a phased process. And then, cuz here, here's, here's the thing I'd like everyone to understand. If we get into Berwyn, if we work out a deal with the city and we have that partnership, a strong partnership with Berwyn. We won't be bringing the fifth graders over right away. We're gonna need time for that, so you're looking at K two, K three, it'll be a phase in process. And if it's a phase in process, then we can phase in how much of the building we need and what part of the building is we're renovating, so on and so forth. It is tight, it is very tight, I understand that. And right now, that's the only thing I'm losing sleep over at night is, what's September gonna look like?
Uh, okay, yeah, that's, that's my big question, i- is that, I don't, and I'm sorry Nadia, I'll let you have, I just don't wanna see us do work.
Oh, no, no.
And then, and then have to go back to do more work over work we just did, but I know that our business manager would say, we're not gonna be doing that. You know, if we're gonna do it, let's do it right, let's do it right one time, so we're that, we're not spending that. But I know here, for example, it's been done a couple of times where we, we did some renovations and it's like, now wait a minute, we just renovated this, now we're gonna take part of it apart just to.
Well.
Create some more.
Exactly, no, the nice thing about it's two things, number one, we have five years. Five Penny, is it five years with S R funding?
Three into, it depends on which pot of money it is, cuz there's three separate pots of S R funds. So it spreads over, um, our largest pot of S R funds is three years.
So we have three years, which can be, year one is phase one, year two is phase two, year three is phase three completion. Moreover, I will tell you right now, we will not do anything seventy-five percent, everything will be one hundred percent. And because of the board's due diligence with our budget and with the fact that we have a strong equity fund. We are in a good position to get this work done. As much as I'd like it to be done in one year, it won't be, but we will be abating the entire property as time goes on.
All right, thank you.
And just so you know, not every classroom in that building has asbestos floors. They have replaced some of them, so some of them are relatively new.
But I figured, well, I figured the, the architect wouldn't do that, more of the general contractor. Would go through there and say, that has to go, that has to go, there's chips here and so on and so forth. Okay, Nadia?
I guess I have to say that I know that with the leadership that you have in place to take care of that, that I, I have a hundred percent faith. That it will get done, and if, and if you're given a schedule, you're gonna get it. Um, so what I'm hearing is that our numbers really at, at the early ages is where we're growing, and that's where we need to.
We're, we're bursting at the seams right now, K three. And then eighth grade is big, in high school, it's growing. So we've, we've been meeting, and we've been looking at different possibilities and options. That's why I'm hoping I will have something for the board to review in a very short amount of time. About expansion in our current elementary schools to get us over this hump. I will tell you. Uh, this summer, I will, let me put it this way, July one through July one. Is going to be a very hectic time for us when it comes to infrastructure. And I will tell you this though, September of twenty-two, hopefully everything will do fruition, everything. But I know you think I'm crazy when I say September of twenty-one, but I, I have to establish these very difficult goals. Because we have, this is, this is not something that anyone can drag their feet on.
I'm just concerned about supplies. I know someone revamping their house, they ordered cabinets months ago. Um, wood is really, really hard to get, my son's got a fine with Trenton because he's gotta put up fence panels. He can't get wood, he's gonna take everything down and put up whatever the fake stuff is, because he can't get wood. So my concern is because of supply and demand that we're going to have problems.
I know, so supply and demand is gonna be our slowdown, it, it is going to be, definitely, I mean, that's, that's. We could have everything in line, everything approved tomorrow, and it takes us a month to get materials that we're opening in a week, we know that. The good thing though is, when you have these larger projects, these larger companies are the ones that have access to the most supplies. Where little guys like us, we may not have that same access. So when you order in bulk, they may have access to supplies we may not have, that's our hope. We, but we do know, in talking with the architects and the engineers, we do know that that is a major concern right now.
You, you were all set, cuz I was gonna go over to.
So, are, are we good financially to take on both projects right, right now?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I'm like, I'm with Mo, like, I think Berwyn's already up. You know, there's a building there standing, I, I think that if, you know, we put most of our time, energy and, you know, focus on. And getting the expand, you know, those classrooms added on, that's, I think that's what we really need to do, I.
Just so I can hear you, so you're saying to, to move on our buildings first?
Saying move on our buildings first, Berwyn's there, we're waiting on. Things that are out of our control right now, um, we can control more with our own buildings. And if we're gonna, we're gonna need them both eventually anyway, so I, and if we have the, you know, financially we're okay and we can manage both projects. I think we move full force with adding, you know, with the additions to the buildings, um. Since that's gonna take, you know, you, there, the buildings there, we need to add on, we, we need to worry about materials and stuff like that, I, I, I don't know, I just feel like. There are buildings, we're already gonna be investing in our buildings, that's, that's my, my opinion.
I, I had a question on top of that, but go ahead Nadia, please.
I would hope that we don't move on Berwyn until we have. Having a place, number one, number two, we were always told in the past. That when you had to do any type of renovation to a, a building, a district building, that there was a state, um. Process that you have to go through, you have to submit plans to the state, um, something with the, with. I don't know exactly what.
That's why Scott's gonna be working with the architects, so that they can develop the plans that we have to submit to the state.
And will they be back to us to move this process that quickly?
Yeah, that's, we're still in the very early stages of that, so that's, hopefully we'll have answers by that, by the middle of June, that's the goal.
See, the thing is, there are a lot of assumptions that are not in our hands. But we as a school district are he- and have, we're, we're dealing with a good problem. And I know other school districts that are talking about how they're gonna consolidate and close schools. So I would rather have this problem all day, every day, so it's, it's gonna take patience. Um, but I, I will tell you that we're not sitting on our hands on this, and we're trying to get everything lined up.
Yusuf, what's, uh, I, what's the going rate? At one time, I don't know if Sue recalls, I think the going rate was one hundred and twenty-five per square. Does that sound about right? Well, well, this was, this was at the original bond, so it was one twenty-five, which would have been, yeah, many years ago.
I, I, I don't know, I would say it's double if not more.
So, and you're looking at, uh, you're looking at doing two to three rooms per building, right, just in the elementary?
Correct.
And the average room size was how many square?
About eleven hundred.
Okay, I just wanna, I just wanna do my numbers, so.
Thirteen hundred.
Yeah, and today's code and expectation, yes.
And then are you gonna be in bathrooms too?
It matters, if we do them as upper elementary rooms, maybe we don't have to, if they do them as lower elementary, I mean, that, that will come into play in terms of what the architects identify.
And what part of the building?
Yeah, where you're gonna build, yeah.
So, yeah, so the material to, to actually put the room up itself won't be that much of an issue, it's gonna come to. The archi, like the engineering of it, making sure it's lined up with the HVAC system and the water and all. But like I said, the good thing that we do have is all three of our elementary schools, we have a lot of space. We have a lot of space that is un- underutilized, and this is an opportunity to utilize that space. Our, we actually even, the only school that is landlocked is Riverside. Crestwood is not landlocked, Hi- Hillcrest, Highview, Kenlock are not landlocked, and Cherry Hill will not be landlocked. And if our partnership with the city with Berwyn, that is not landlocked, so that is a huge positive. Other districts that are in very dense populations and they're landlocked. Those are districts that have to go for bonds because they have to find a parcel of land to build something. So that's another positive, that we don't have to do that.
Anyone else?
Do we have any alternate? Plans or possibilities of maybe like using hype if we have to for classrooms or something?
Um, we could, some of our alternate plans would be discussing with the city of possible renting out a couple rooms at Berwyn. That is a possibility, um, another possibility is, we could move around some of the classrooms, the, the. The preschool program at the high school, we can move that completely to Cherry Hill and figure something out there, then use some of those classrooms. So there are, um, there's also the possibility that we could, uh, lease space from a couple other local institutions. Um, but that's like our third and worst case scenario.
Yeah, I don't like leasing at all, I mean, I don't.
And, and also, please note that, yes, we are using the media center currently in two of our elementary schools for classrooms. If we had to do that for one semester, I don't see, foresee that being an issue. But for a full year, that would be a concern, but, cuz they've already adapted and adopted those areas into classrooms. And that's something that we're continuously keeping as an option as well.
Can I just ask one quick question, how far do we back up over at Hillcrest, cuz I thought that was Heinz Drive and it was, um.
To the wood line, it's tight, but it goes, it goes to. And then it goes over west about.
It's not all the way to the wood line because.
Well, no, it angles, it angles, it angles in the back, so you, you could go back maybe a hundred feet, hundred and fifty?
Walked it at one point after the city.
We did.
It's something to think about, each school may not need two or three bil- classrooms. You know, Hillcrest may need one or two, Kenlock will need three, Highview may need two. But looking at what we have, there is option and possibility there.
And Highview's not a bad building, cuz you could go up two on that back.
Yes.
So there's a possibility there.
Yes.
All right, anyone else? All right. Thank you for your updates.
You're welcome.
Um, I believe, Penny, did, was there something that you had as well, business?
I do need to get a finance meeting for the week of June, um, seventh.
I don't have my phone.
Whether it's the eighth, ninth, or tenth, the Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, or even that Monday, it really, um, I just need it before the board meeting.
Okay, so, um. Yeah, I don't have my, uh.
If you can let me know, if you can send me some dates.
Okay, so, I know Sue, cuz Sue's looking now, if both of you can check, let me know tomorrow. No, uh, eighth, ninth, or tenth are the dates, so.
Eighth or ninth is best, but I'll make any day work.
And we can do whatever time, I'm not.
Five with supper?
Yeah, I can't come before five, I'm sorry guys.
No, that's fine.
No, so five thirty, is five thirty a good time? So, five thirty, oh, I just got stung by a bee, I think. Um, what day, eighth, ninth, or tenth?
Um, doesn't matter, just give me a day.
Well, I, I'll wait for you to check your calendar, and then you can, if you could text me tomorrow, then I can send out the invite tomorrow morning. Or tomorrow sometime.
Okay.
If, if that works.
Okay, so I will text you, any, cuz they're, they are both, Sue and Nadia are okay with any dates, so. Um, okay, we'll let you know first thing in the morning.
Yep, I just want to go over the budget and the projected budget for next year, um, so I'll have a budget revision for the twenty. Twenty-one school year, and then the projected budget for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year that I want to go through and walk through with you.
Okay, all right, anything else?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay. Uh, for business?
Not for business, but for other things.
Anybody else, or any questions regarding business for, uh, business?
You know what, there was, would, um. The computer mess that we were under, where Walega was talking about, um.
I'm sorry.
The insurance on the room that.
Right.
With the water?
Unit ventilator blew up on?
Yes.
What's happening with that, did we get our, um, cuz I know this was.
It, it's been ongoing and they, um, my understanding was we were waiting for some. Feedback from technology on different things that were being, um. Ruined or destroyed in the, the flooding.
Right, I've read that a few times, uh, in every report, so you still haven't.
It's not been resolved, finalized yet, no, when, sometimes with the insurance companies, it does take a little while to get resolved and the reimbursements and the things to come in.
Okay, and the other thing that I'm, uh, seeing is, um, about the insurance, the cost. Um, because of the accidents.
The Maisel insurance?
Yes.
And that's, um, it's the whole Maisel pool, it's just not ours, but it's the whole Maisel pool that the cost went up.
Right, but then I saw that you put in here, um, because of Riverside?
That was one of our reasons on why our insurance, on that portion of our insurance, we had a higher claim rate, if you looked at our claim rates for the past five years. The lowest claim rate dropped off, and so a higher claim rate was added because they rotate every five years. Because Riverside's car accident, I mean, that we had that claim that year, so that skyrocketed our claims to the insurance company. And we had a lower rate drop off.
So why would we be responsible for that if the, if a car hit it, wouldn't it be the car insurance?
We still had to file a claim.
We, it's still, we filed the claim, and yes, they may have gone after it, but I doubt that they would get as much from the car insurance company. As they would to replace the building, but because it's our building and it's our property, that's what our property insurance covers.
Yeah, that one, yeah. Um, I did have a question, although I did speak with Dr. Musalim on Friday. And I don't know whether or not it was in your report, doctor, or if it was in. The, the report in regards to the vandalism to the buildings? Was it, yeah, we discussed it, and I had mentioned to Dr. Yusuf on Friday. That, uh, the police department has what's known as a periodic check. So you can contact, and, and Yusuf said he would be on top of it, but anyways, just so everybody knows is that, you know, you can contact the police department. And ask for all of our buildings to be put on this periodic check. So that after hours, let's say that we're done with activities after eleven o'clock, when all the janitorials are gone. Then they, from midnight until shift change, which is at six thirty. Uh, you know, they're, they're supposed to come through our buildings and monitor the bill, or check the buildings. And then they can log it on their, their daily reports via computer. And if we ever have any issues, it would be just a matter of us going back to look at cameras to see what we can find. And then we can also see whether or not somebody actually did check our buildings or not, so, but I think that would be a good deterrent is. You know, for people to see a police car periodically. know, for people to see a police car periodically driving through parking lots and shining lights or just walking the building.
Over, this, this, this previous summer, they did it a lot for us, um, cause I, when I spoke to them, I haven't spoken to them since the school year started, but I have reached out and-
Thank you, yeah, cause we talked about that on Friday, so thank you, okay. That's all I had, but yes, Nadia, Nadia.
Yeah, that was one of the things that I wrote down, is there any way we can notify the neighbors what is happening so they can keep an eye out? Because I know a couple of people that, uh, like Ali Sharar lives across the street, and I know he's pretty good about that. So if we can just, um, mention it to the neighbors in the area, um, that this is what's happening, keep an eye out, call the police, if that's what's happening, I know at Kenlock is what I'm, what I read.
Yeah, I know somebody had a breakfast, or somebody had a coffee with the parents, I don't know who did that, who hosted that?
I, I know, like all three elementary schools, I know, well, I know, I know Kenlock and, and, and Hillcrest have been doing that.
Yeah, and I just read it, and, and, and maybe that, that's a good way of getting to the neighbors, is do that coffee and-
Yep.
Or maybe just a newsletter that goes.
And good cameras.
Yeah, our cameras, uh, yeah, I'm getting a nod in the background regarding those, and I think we spoke about that.
Yep, it's in, that, that's something that is-
In the works.
In the works.
No, thank you.
Took a little time to get-
All the projects, no, I understand.
Yeah.
Can we have motion lights at all the schools, don't we? Outside?
I don't know if they're motion, but I think they're just regular floodlights that-
And some are, and I don't think they've replaced them because they're still waiting for the transition.
That, yeah, that's gonna come in with our new-
Okay.
The new bond proposals.
Cause I think Highview, Highview is one that I noticed at night is dark.
Cause those are all, yeah, cause that's all gonna, yeah, that's all gonna become LED, that's all gonna become LED lighting.
Yeah, I know Highview for sure, cause that's it, yeah.
It's kind of, it's upsetting to hear because they're in the neighborhood, it's not like they're off into a-
No, you're right, yeah.
You know?
We will follow up on that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anything else Penny?
That's all that I have, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Lazar, good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
It was nice to see you on Friday.
Yes, it was nice to see you as well.
Yeah, and thank you to Najah, who I think was one of the sponsors. Cap, well, but a worker, it was really nice to see-
It was great to see the kids.
The administration, and then the, uh, the junior high school administration. I don't recall whether or not there were any high school teachers there.
No.
No, but it was all, I mean, it, yeah, it was all, a lot of junior high school, uh, parents and, and staff, and, and it was really nice to see there and be part of that, so, okay, um-
It was fun to see the families too.
Yeah, well, it's been a long time, especially Hassan.
The parents had a lot of fun.
Yeah, yeah, well, the little displays that they had, the cars, and then on, and then on social media, I, one of the captions was, I tried to get him to take a picture with the car, but this is the only one I got, and there was a picture of a, of a young man like, like that, so he obviously was not that thrilled, but glad to graduate. Anyways, um, anything I, or any reports that you have?
I don't have anything exciting today, um, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Are there any questions for HR or student services? Nadia?
I don't, you know, I don't know if it's even a question, I, I, I was reading about, um, Andrea, the B thirteen student, uh, level corrective action plan that was issued by M D E. Can you just kinda give us a, like, where are we, have we done anything, has anything been reported?
It's the one I'm thinking of, I think they, uh, pulled eight random audits, and she's been providing them with all of the necessary documentation that they need, um, so-
This is an ongoing from previous, correct?
No, no, this is a new audit.
This was a new-
This is a new audit, and no, I, and this is, I don't think that there was any, um, red flag that went up that caused the audit, I think this is just a standard audit.
Of the thirty-five districts, I think eight were chosen, and we were one of the lucky eight.
We got, we got lucky, we won the Lotto.
The other thing, the other thing that you're looking at is, it's, so I know exactly what it is, because right when I got the email, Andrea came straight to my office and said, it's not a new one, it's a follow-up on the one we closed out.
Okay.
So we don't have a new action plan, but that audit is a separate, it's just a random audit, and we're gonna get random audits because of our history.
Right.
I'll just be honest.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
But I'm not worried about it because everything they've asked Andrea for in this audit, she's got. We don't, the processes and procedures that have been put in place makes it a very simple process for her to go through now, she's not having to dig up information anymore.
Okay, good.
So, but I do, I went right when you said it, I knew what you're talking about. Cause like I said, Andrea ran in my office, it's not a new one, don't worry.
Well, that's how I, I thought that it was related, because I knew that there was some missed time, and we're still trying out.
It's just, it's, it's the closing out process.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much.
You're welcome. So, that's one, and I apologize. Uh, in regards to what we were mentioning earlier, the security of the buildings, is it possible, uh, that we could talk with technology, or administration could speak with technology about putting something on the cable channel and in the web, just, you know, reporting suspicious activity to the local police department, uh-
We can do that.
That way there, we may not be able to get a newsletter to our parents quickly enough, but for those that watch the cable channel, for those that wa- uh, are online, maybe that alert can pop up, you know, if you ever see anything suspicious, kids in the parking lot, or whatever the case may be, especially after hours-
Yep.
They can call.
We'll do that.
I know at Kenlock, they're sitting in the garage across the street.
Yeah, a couple of those-
No reason for that, that's why I'm so disappointed, but they might not know what is happening.
Just so you know, a couple of those parents have reached out to me, and, and we've made some adjustments due to that, so, but yes, I know exactly.
I think they would be very upset to know that this is happening, you're not aware of it.
But a few of the parents that live over on the, um, Richardson have reached out to me in regards to knowing that the potential is there, nothing's etched in stone, and are thankful that they're, if it's done within a couple of years, their daughters could go to school there, if not then, of course, they'll be here.
What, what side of the building, or, or, uh, Kenlock was damaged?
It was in the back?
In the back court, right?
I have to go back and look at the update, I don't remember off the top of my head.
It said playground, oh, sorry, the playground is on the side.
The west side.
Which is right across the street from-
Yeah, I can't believe it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He, he, no, no, those neighbors are good, they're good about that.
They're hanging out, they're not-
No, 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 when we were over there walking the playground that day, three neighbors walked up to us and asked us what we were doing there, so, no, they are watching.
I think the, uh, the, the camera systems, the security systems is probably the best way to go.
So we just-
Obviously always need neighborhood support, there's no doubt about that, but-
They are watching.
We just got a bid on some new cameras, and-
Not yet. But we just got the information to put the bid out.
Sorry, we just got the information to put the bid out.
We did not get that bid in yet.
Multiple bids, right?
We got the information to put the bid out.
We haven't put the bid out yet.
Yeah, the next meeting, we'll have information if we're on it and we're moving along.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, if, if I could, and I don't know if technology is able to answer this, but I know at one time, there was a survey that was done on each of the buildings regarding the security cameras, and whether or not they were really, and we spoke about this, remember? I mean, this is some, completely different, but I'm just adding on to what we talked about Friday, there was a survey that was done that actually, uh, said where cameras should be placed and what degree of, of vision it was, and I don't know, and this was a while back, so I don't, that, that survey may no longer exist as it, as we, as I speak right now.
It wasn't that long ago, actually.
I thought it was like maybe five years ago.
Scott was part of that discussion, because there was one at the high school that needed to be put in by the cafeteria.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure?
Positive.
Well, I'll ask Mr. David Green to look into that, see if there's anything.
Maybe, maybe, maybe that's what we need, is a, is an actual survey, and, and then it goes on top of what we spoke about, which is someone coming in and doing an analysis to find out, if you've got thirty cameras, you should have thirty screens on this, or thirty little pictures, and each of them should be showing a certain degree of, of vision, so that an operator can see that, or if it's not being monitored, you can always go back into the database or the hard drive to rewind and see what was and what wasn't there, but the big thing is, is if you have thirty cameras, you should have thirty views, and they should be covering and overlapping in certain areas to make sure that it's all, not looking at the sky or down in the, in a well someplace.
So, okay, we'll do.
Okay, thank you, um, Nadia?